It takes a little while.
It takes a little while to see him.
Because your name was in front of me. I wanted to make sure I didn't put Mr. Barhouse. He appreciates. I forget I come to parents, I forget I come over to parents sometimes. That's what I do when I go to St. Louis to the doctor, I take a whole thing for my medicine and then I at least take one change of clothes, always, every time. Well, I had, I had seizures in 2006 when I went down there and ended up having to stay, you know, at the hospital overnight, so I was like, ever since then, I'm... Yep. Most definitely. Yeah, that would not be fine.
There's a budget for 2006, yes, and 2017. And your point, there was business cards and everything in the firm.
The finance committee is reading the order. There was no finance meeting last month due to a lack of forms, so there are no minutes from the past meeting. I have nothing for finance, does anyone else have anything for finance? Don?
I have a question on funding for Mr. Henderson, where's that coming from out of our budget?
From line item that Bob's funding was coming out of.
I'm sorry?
The same line, right now, the same line item that was previous city administration funding was coming out of.
So we're paying two people for the same job, aren't we?
We are, exactly.
Presently?
It's scrapped.
Okay.
If you'll know, there's a salary differential that I would anticipate kicking in any time after Wednesday.
The funding for Mr. Bolton?
That's coming out of administrative salaries, which is a line item appropriated.
The council voted briefly for the extension, but we have both of the...
For an extension?
Yeah.
Of Mr. Bolton? I think there was one vote to, to a collaborative arrangement with a not-for-profit to cost-share Mr. Bolton, that's about you.
Wasn't that for two months, the last two months of last year?
That was, that was with the, from a, from a volunteer over the summer to pay over the, until January 15th. After January 15th, I hired him as a part-time employee, like I would any staff person.
You don't think that should have been brought to...
Why would that go to council?
Well, they're spending taxpayers' money to pay somebody to do your job, I think the council should have a right to approve or reject that.
Okay, well, I'll set aside the tone of that comment, paying someone to do my job, paying someone to do a job, certainly I pay many people to do many jobs in the administration. The city council appropriated funds, they did so in the budget, they appropriated a certain amount for that line item, the structure of the administration, unless this city council wants to set up a policy, a government structure, it's up to the administration, I can, I can hire a secretary, a janitor, whatever structure it is that facilitates me doing, not just me, but the whole administration running itself, I certainly don't think it would be wise that the administration has to come to the legislature for every part-time employee or change, we're considering some changes in, in our custodial services right now, is that something I need to direct to city council? I don't think so.
Well, I don't know that there's actually a statute that says that, or an ordinance that says that, but it seems to me like I've heard some comments about transparency, and that certainly is not transparent to push that through without advising the council.
Well, I disagree.
That's your privilege.
There, there was a position open for a janitor in custody, because there isn't, wasn't a position open for this position, you made this position, and I thought that was for a year, which was up in January the 15th, you gave him an extension, it is in the budget, I thought the council would lead the vote on that extension, so your thinking is if you put that job in effect in January last year, that's going to stay there for as long as Mr. Bolton wants to work?
My position is that legislature appropriates funds, they gave me a certain amount of money to run the administration, at mid-year meeting, I reduced that, I gave back some of those funds, I retained enough to do what I think we need to do for the administration, that included hiring Brett Bolton as a resource to continue some of the projects that he was on and to, to continue extending what we can get done, and I believe that that is exactly what the administration is meant to do.
That's the first, you're the first mayor that's had a person in that position, is that not correct?
If, if, if a position is needed and useful, then, then certainly it is my job to put in place that human resource, and, and in this case, we had an opportunity, I was able to recruit someone to get very specific things done, and I did so, there was certainly no lack of transparency of the fact that Brett has continued, he's been at every meeting and, and been involved along the way, the only difference is I no longer partnered with LEDC or anyone else to, to do it, there's no agreement to do that, I simply hired a part-time person.
But that's the only difference, it is running a pretty tight budget, too, sure.
Okay, here, here's the bottom line, guys, this, it is absolutely up to you, you hold all of the power, if you'd like to legislate that, then please do, but you have not legislated that the mayor needs to come to you for hiring a part-time, what, what we have is, in place, is that you appropriate funds for the administration to cover staff and salaries, and the administration does that, and that's exactly what's happening, but if you'd like to further legislate policies that would govern...
Well, I just think it would have been nice, appropriate, for you, you did it in steps, but the last step, you didn't, you, if his, if his time was up in January the 15th, then you just renewed it without council approval, if you feel like that's fine, then that's the way you're running your administration.
That's not the way I described it at the end.
If I was going to renew the agreement that I had with LEDC to produce that human resource, I probably would have brought it to council, what I did was go ahead and hire
him, part-time, to continue doing the work that he's working on.
Well, is his position working for LEDC or the city, or whatever you mean?
For the city, for the mayor's office, he's, he's an assistant to the administration.
Okay, and how long is this, there was $1,400 appropriated, is that correct?
The full, I'd have to look at the full line item, like you did not appropriate money for his position, you appropriated money in the budget for the administration to pay salaries and wages, and that's the money that his salary, his, his wage is coming out.
So it's not really termed that way, that you use that way, the same thing to me?
I can't speak to what it means to you.
Well, if the other, I mean, there's one, two, three, four, and she's absent, if they feel like this is kosher and everything is okay, then there's no need to take a vote on it.
Feel free to make a motion or legislate it as you'd see fit, you, I think I'm satisfactorily in your opinion.
I make a motion that if you...
You're in a committee meeting tomorrow, so no motions you can make, or you can something that's forecast.
Okay, but I'll make a motion, in fact, if the full council, that anytime that you set up temporary, because this originally was temporary, oh, I'm sorry, then you should consult the council if you want to extend it, that's my feeling.
Temporary what? No, you're, okay, yeah, I'm not sure what your motion, that you just now stated, said, are you talking about anytime a position is created, regardless of, you know, if it's called a part-time or, I'm not really sure what you're trying to say.
Okay, if the, Mr. Bolton's position, if I'm...
You want it specific to Mr. Bolton, well, then let's see.
Mr. Bolton's position, mine, temporary, it went for a year, and it was up in January 15th.
If it had gone for a year, this administration hasn't been placed for it.
Pardon?
Since you appointed him, back in... He was not appointed, he was not appointed.
Would he hire you?
He was hired.
Did you name that position?
I named it to have a handle on what it was I was asking to be done by that human resource.
Okay, then I guess I want to word the, the motion, that if you create a new position, then the council should approve it, it's temporary, when that time runs out, was there not, am I wrong on January the 15th, I thought I got a memo from you that said that his funding ran out on January the 15th?
My arrangement to hire him in conjunction, the partnership with LEDC terminated on January 15th.
That's, that's more than January 15th, then if you want to extend that, then I think you should come to the council, so I think you should come for council approval, if you set up a temporary position for a certain time, you want to extend that, then it should be approved by the council, because the first time it had to be approved by the council, did we not vote on it?
I wasn't here, I wasn't here.
So you give...
Yeah, because he had appropriate money for it, it was partnership, it's money, yeah, it was not hiring specifically for...
We still have an appropriate money for it.
I think he was asking for the partnership between LEDC and the city.
Don, if I come back up, I don't believe I needed to bring it to full council to, to hire Brett in the fashion that I did, I brought it to full council to have transparency, to vet the idea with council people, so that I understood where you guys were to, relative to where I was trying to take the administration, I also further brought it up because I think it was really an extraordinary thing, that we were partnering with a local not-for-profit to extend our economic development and community push-in in the way that we were, and I wanted to celebrate that in open office and allow everyone to be on the record in support or not in support of it, which everyone is on that record, but I do not believe that I needed to come to full council to hire a part-time person for the administration.
You'd have had to come for the funding?
No, the funding, I would have had to come if I didn't have the funding, but I do have the funding, the funding is done in a line item, it's not in a bunch of line items for specific people, it's in one line item that is for the administration to cover salaries and wages, the way that I deploy or use that line item is for my administration to determine what is most effective, if, if, if the legislature would like to, to give more form to that, if you'd like to say, I can have one janitor and they have to be full-time, instead of I can have two janitors that are part-time, if they want, if they want, if you want to say I can or cannot have a director of special projects, then feel free to do that, that's absolutely legislative prerogative, but you have not done that.
Well, Ms. Smith said we did that, we took a vote for the funding.
For the, to partnership with LEDC, he was telling us, we were getting $3,000 from LEDC, and he was telling us that we were matching that, that's what he was telling us, so that we can pay.
Okay, so that's a one-time thing?
That was a one-time.
That was a one-time thing, if your concern is that the administration is somehow misspending the appropriations that it's been given to run the administration, then I'd really love to have that conversation, because I turned around and reduced that amount at the mid-year budget, I retained enough to keep a couple of initiatives alive, including being able to hire Brett part-time, because it's been so productive to have them onboard, if, if the legislature wants to restrict me in some way from being able to do that, restrict the administration from being able to do that, it's certainly your prerogative, and if finance committee would like to take that to full council, then I think you could make that motion.
I'm just going to make that motion.
What motion?
They're going to have to state your motion.
Do you want to agree with this?
You're going to have to tell me what it is.
You never actually made a motion.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that anytime the mayor, because this is the way I look at it, now, if you, if you don't agree with the way I look at it, well, no.
Is this a part of your, is this a part of your motion, can you state your motion?
I don't know if I can get through it or not, what I want to make a motion is, anytime the mayor creates a job, a new job, a position, anything, and he has to come to the council for funding, then if it's extended, he needs to come back to the council for the funding, because the funding is no longer there, now, if that's inappropriate, the way that I worded that, somebody help me word it so that it'll make more sense, but not take away what I just said.
Well, I'm, I'm confused a little bit, I think what you're saying, I think I know what you're driving at, but it's funding outside of what's been budgeted?
Was it budgeted?
Yes.
I'm trying to understand your motion.
I don't know if the 14...
It was, I did not take an additional $1,400 out of our reserves in order to pay for this.
I never said you did that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I raised the question, why did the funding come from?
Out of the line item where I pay for whatever administrative wages and salaries are required to conduct the administration, same as I would any other part-time employee that I might hire.
I'm, I've had people ask me, does the mayor have the authority to create these new jobs?
And my answer to that is yes, absolutely, thank goodness, if the mayor can conduct an administration with a structure that's appropriate and works for the administration.
Okay, so as long as you stay within your bounds for the funding, you can pretty well...
Correct, if the legislature would like to further restrict that, it is certainly their prerogative, and no such restriction exists, and I would advise against it.
I guess, I guess what I'm confused on is consistency, if we had to do it at different times in the past, as you, then I thought we would continue having to do that.
My understanding is that the, the partnership with LEDC was what he was bringing to the table, that you're dealing with that, that's what I've heard, at all.
Well, I'm not saying...
Is that not...
I don't know if that's true enough, that's not what I...
You were here and voted on it, I wasn't.
Yeah, I was here and voted on it, but that's not what I...
What did you think about it?
I thought I voted on the same thing he just said, we've hired somebody to help the mayor run his office.
Was the motion stated that it was part of LEDC, an initiative together with it?
I couldn't tell you, because I don't recall the vote.
That's what I read in the newspaper at the time, I mean, if that's not, if you didn't understand then, what that position entailed, then perhaps that's part of the misunderstanding now.
Well, I'm not saying that I understand it now, but I'm asking questions so that I can understand.
Okay, you've been on council for some time now, off and on, maybe a year off or whatever, do you recall...
I'm not going to allow, you're asking me these questions, are you trying to explain something to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you recall a lady sitting upstairs, may memory, that was making copies and doing all kinds of office work?
No.
Did you have a vote on her? If you don't recall it?
I don't recall.
They had it for quite some time as a part-time employee, a long time, she was doing work when Christina was out with her, returning, to start with.
It's, it's that same thing, and then she continued on after that.
For the project she was scanning and I don't know what else, if they were doing the...
She was writing retention.
Well, I had a neurophysic, was she hired for a particular...
I have no clue, that was the administration at the time, really?
Yeah, it never came, it never seemed to do it. It's just like summer health, this part-time health, but that's sometime that I see that we, they just do it, we can't, we can't regulate every little bit of thing to run, to run the office, that's just...
Well, okay, you brought the, you brought the motion.
Just by motion, that would be good, how much...
You know, if, if the council, if this is not important to the council, I don't know why I'm wasting my breath, because I thought, you know, if there was something there of importance, the reason I mentioned, but if it's not of importance, let's go on to something that is important.
Well, how many spend our money, it's really important, but I don't know how many, I don't know how many people work for the street department, I don't know how many people work for the water department?
Please, may I speak, they get into mess, I think the assumption was that Mr. Bolton was going to go back to college on second semester, and so we okayed it until the second semester would begin, which would be the 15th of, of January, now, he decided not to go back for some reason or another, I have no idea, I see no reason why we just can't continue, if there's money, it has been appropriated in that fund.
I don't see if there's any need for council action to hire a part-time person to do all this stuff, unless there's a motion to add some to the, restriction to the administration that they get full council.
I don't know.
Is there anything else for finance? Not that the finance committee has named a term?
Can we have a report this morning?
Time for a...
I know, I know.
I'm sorry today, but that's the truth.
Yeah.
Okay.
I had the same problem the other day.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay. I'm not finished, it's still more clear.
It's okay, I still love you, it's good.
Too late to apologize?
She'll have a lot of skills by the time she grows up.
Down here, I'll pick her.
But you don't want to act like you need anything yet?
That's true, she took my phone, she tried to shoot you out the top.
Always look good.
Better.
If the insurance would take a lot of...
She always says that's my kind of show. She, you thought it was a little...
Yes, it is?
Yes. I got something for your mother, it's, it's something that's... And I don't know, it puts you in, what happened was, I, my, messy fact, your mother, I got a...
All of my father?
So, take a look at it, it's Sandra B. after all.
Is she being hurt or...
Well, we're...
There's always...
Okay, it's spread on.
The NYU one?
That would be better, since...
I don't have another...
I don't know, I don't know what to say.
Yeah, that could cost you a bundle.
That's what I...
And she was in...
I thought she was...
She wasn't going to be...
You should, okay.
No.
I passed off, I just said it today, okay, I haven't... Okay, well, I figured, but all I did was take out a couple words.
Any guys, did you get any guys for her, guys, men, did you have any guys, men?
I cut the brush.
Here's the two features, the real estate sale...
All I did was stay long with you.
They come down, they carry them.
Unless you, uh, mysteriously think that you have something.
Who's that?
It was a popular name when we were born.
Yeah, because now, now you're right here.
Well, we thought about that if we were going to have a girl.
It was mostly around, like, my... Probably born in seven, yeah. Yeah, seven years.
Yeah.
I apologize for the delay, we're, our clerk is still making the copies in minutes.
You were born in seven, seven?
Nine, one, seven, seven.
Just a few days before my birthday.
Oh, that's right, we have a close birthday.
Yeah, nine, four.
We have a long time.
Started my career, two years before you were born.
It's okay.
It'll be forty years this, this, I think.
I can do anything. You're good at it.
Well, I appreciate it.
I think you're exceptional at it. If I do say so myself.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.